Call the meeting in order for everybody please rise for the I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considering all which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Gosnell?
Here.
Ms. Lynn? Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Dorni?
Here.
Mr. Gongguer? Mr. Nemitz? Mr. Vak?
President.
Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Ms. Dykes?
Here.
Mr. Antonacci?
Here.
Chief Carlson? Jim Crainbucker? Mr. Radica? You've all received a copy of the minutes for the meeting on 5/15/2024. What are the wishes of council?
I make a motion we approve it as presented.
I'll second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Other comment?
Ann Lewis? Here. Am I recognized, Mr. President?
Yes.
Excuse me. Under Title 65, the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 7, 710.1C, I'm raising the objections to the agenda of the workshop. Workshops are not meetings. Communication is one-way. There is no deliberation or no decision-making. So what you've done is, on March 6th, you've approved bills. Paying bills, approval of bills, is not authorized under a work session. So I object to the authoriz- uh, approval of paying bills and the meeting in general. Because you're in violation of the Sunshine Act.
Anybody want to answer or?
From the, my legal position, we are in violation of the Sunshine Act. In fact, you advertise a workshop session and you list the information appropriately on the agenda. You can actually pay bills and things like that if it was listed on the agenda appropriately. So it's our position that in March bills were paid appropriately and I don't know if you're rejecting this evening's target, which is the March.
No, I'm objecting to tonight's work session as well.
Go ahead.
Anybody else? Comments from borough officials?
Alright, so obviously just workshops, we're just trying to get discussions out of the way and some of the things that we can discuss about the bathroom down in the park again. And then I'd like to bring up also about the sport court. Some recommendations. We can start with the sport court. Obviously, we got to get basketball hoops to put in. Got some pricing for four different styles. So something that we need to probably address for the next meeting and put on the agenda. If anybody would like to take a look at these, that have four different styles of... Basically, the post is the same, it's just the backboard is different. Anybody want to look at? The bathroom.
Well, we'll make sure we get it to everybody as well. Mike has sent it even off with it.
And then as far as the bathroom, I guess just anything else going on with it? But I don't know who's on buildings in.
Tony, Dave, and Chuck.
Yeah, the, again today, I caught my contractors there. We can't get into the storage room in the existing building. I don't know if that lock's changed or what it is.
You have keys, Chuck?
No, no.
Yeah, you do. You took out one set of keys that I gave you, never returned others. Key on there for the lock.
Page three, that's a master lock.
I'm not sure what kind of padlock it is.
Yeah, it's a master. And it has a small key. I don't have that small key.
There was one that, because you have the same key and you need to give the playground supervisor. And they have access to, I don't know what happened to it. So we do have one though, correct?
I do remember at some time I had it, but...
Yeah.
All of our keys are keeping my, the...
Yeah, I just know that said, whatever, I mean, I have a key for it, I mean. So if you need a key for it, just come.
I'll need to get tomorrow, we won't back down.
Yeah, but I don't like giving you my key. I'll open it up for you.
What do you say?
You lost one key already.
I don't want you to lose two.
So what are they looking at, Chuck?
We're looking at taking that existing building, replacing out the door. And where they pass through this, it's got a header in, putting a second door there. And between the two, then there's enough area behind them to make one occupancy handicap accessible stalls, one men, one women. And the wall that is, as you go in the existing bathroom, there's a block walk straight ahead. The choices aren't even sitting on it. It was done, it was probably built for the fact to make it vandalism-proof. Just to put that in way back when. And so that can come down, move it back into storage area. Only the distances that are needed to make the footprint inside of it for handicap accessible. Where that bathroom sink is now, new sink goes in there that is, again, handicap accessible, tilting here, all the good things. And then, and that's what the range you walk in, you look over to the left as you're walking, straight down will be the toilet. So they, they'll be handicap accessible, more enough room inside of it. We're looking already at putting in the new con- the new wall between them, across the back, and then separating the two. We're looking at different products, so you don't have to put a block wall in again. There's always the assumption if you're putting block in, whether it's inside or out, there's a footer underneath it. We don't need to go that heavy. Maybe we could use two-by-six, some concrete board, things like that, and epoxy paints, so that they last a bit longer. And the other one, what I need for that is sewage, water, electricity's overhead. As built in the park, where are those sewage lines? Where are those water lines? We don't have anything.
We can locate them, but we don't, I mean, the electric's overhead.
Yeah.
And just so you know, I was told that when they redid those bathrooms, originally there was two bathrooms down there. You can see that if you look at that block wall. There was a men's and a women's.
The doors were all...
Toilet down there, but there was no sinks. When they redid that to put the sink and make it one bathroom, I'm told that that floor in the existing bathroom is not the same elevation as the rest of the floor in that storage area, because they raised it up to put some plumbing.
No problem.
No, I'm just letting you know in case you didn't know.
But the reason for the question of sewage lines is not for that building. It's already there, just got to find out how deep it is, find the location, new and tie the two in, put some vents up, the roof, and we're done.
Just make sure that they know, that they also got to flock, follow the floodplain ordinance too.
Well, from the, well, put it this way, they know they have the, let me say this. For now, we're still looking at numbers. We got to get close, just like Mr. Antonacci does when he comes in and says, "We expect it to cost this."
I agree with you 100%, Chuck. And I thank you for doing this, but I think most of your cost is going to come because of the floodplain.
No.
Who's going to do the drawings for the building?
The only thing, we haven't even gotten to the park yet, we're still trying to get it to ballpark. I work on soft costs after that. We have our own engineer, there's no reason why we can't give that to him. But, and we have a zoning officer for a building permit.
Building inspector.
The, to get in it for this now and argue what the floodplain ordinance says, if this isn't even close to being any kind of budget, then we got a real issue. Then we end up with one existing bathroom with very little, not that much done to it. And then a new one, we'll have to look at that more seriously. Bottom line is simple, if you look at your new location and everything in that park, it does not fit where the mass of people are going to be, the bathroom existing is quite a distance away, except for the basketball courts. So the location in this new one, I don't want to deal with flood. I don't want to deal with a lot of that, but if we have to raise a building up and bring the backside of the entrances, so be it. But we can get the doorways and any entrances and all that out of the floodplain.
So are you guys still thinking about just adding a bathroom?
Yeah, the idea is, I want to do both ends.
Both ends, yeah.
And then you got, because you're going to have kids predominantly down near the old bathroom. And the problem in this new pavilion is, is new pavilion's smack in the middle of the floodplain. It's so close in the floodplain, there's nothing closer except dirt. And the problem with that is, that's where the majority of your people are going to be. I can't get below the halfway point of that park without having to deal with the floodplain again. And so these people at the pavilion, they're either walking all the way down there, or in what I see now is quite going to be much safer specs, it's going to be up off of the handicap parking area. It'd be up that high, so it, there's not a lot more I can do. It is what it is, it's down there today. So till we get that figured out, that's just going to have to keep going piece by piece till we can get in a ballpark here.
Did the people that you're talking to, did they say how quickly they could get us a ballpark?
I, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow. We're going through them again. One of the guys, after they left, they went back to the office, started working on it, asked me some questions, and I said, "You got to put eyes on that." So we'll do it again, we're going back down right after 9:00. And then the, so the, we'll see how they... I'm, I also have them here for this. This is 80% of the noise in this building. And originally, when I designed this building out, there was supposed to be a foyer out there. Come right up here to the building here, across the back from the doors, five feet out, gives you wheelchair accessibility and a handicap accessible exit-only door over there. When I do that, it's insulated, and cut out 80% of the noise in this room, then train goes by. So that's part of our sound system issue. Do you want me to go on with the other things I had? Jim, do you have more?
No, that's it. Go ahead.
Ted and I are going to be talking to the fire department. So I'll leave that that scene through. And sound system. I still, we talked about in last meeting, I need to know when a file can be put together so I can take a look at what you're bound to do, if anything. I don't know who's, I don't know, Chelsea, are you still involved with it?
I drafted, worked on the bid, and I, we put it out, and we advertised it to get bids back by June 24th.
I saw the ad.
Yeah. So we just did that because council said to move forward, so that's what I did. You know, that's where we are. Again, everything in the bid is quite specific, but it also, it says, for something, you know, that is, that you can replace that piece of equipment with something that's compatible. So we did it that way, because it's very specific, you know?
Well, I don't know when you want to do it, but if it's correct, we could do it before those bids come in. After those bids come in, maybe it would be better. But I would want to have it completely prepared ahead of time and looked at. But here's the issue. What's in the ad is a very detailed system. Going to be rather expensive. And with a $1,000 deposit, that means the estimate of 10% or 10% says that's about a $10,000 unit.
I think it's going to be more than that. I think it's going to be closer to $35,000 to $40,000.
$35,000 to $40,000?
I do, I do believe that that's where you're going to end up, bottom line.
I think I would look very seriously at the fact that I thought the $10,000 was too much. Tell me if we have the time or when you want to do it. It doesn't, the company I spoke to doesn't meet those specs. But they did some homework as well, and don't believe that those specs are truly what's required to meet your ADA requirements and, you know, and I don't know if you're bound to those requirements.
If, we're not, we are bound to do ADA compatibility. However, I don't, we don't have to do, if the council gets the bids back, they, they're too high, you know, you can reject them. And we can go back to the drawing board of, you know, if there's another company that's below the procurement act requirement for bidding, then we can go out and, and ADA proposal from that. But it just depends on where they're coming in. And Joe, the one bid that we did get, it was $35,000.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest, the biggest issue was that because this room cannot be permanently set up as a council chambers, that they won't get wireless.
Correct.
Because it's not feasible to try to set it up using a wired system every time there's a meeting and running wires across the floor and everything else on that, with the wireless that raised the cost of.
Why can this room not be served as a council chambers?
I think you use it for, it's not permanently housed chambers, so you're using it for multiple, you know, whether it's aerobics, I think you guys have.
I mean, P-TAR has plastic in there, you allow them to do, I mean, they still rent it out for things, the record. That you can do that.
I understand all those things and how we've, what we've done with the room. But let me say this, for the value of this room leasing it out and what it's been used for in the past, and it's a last meeting, I mentioned that we should do something about this. Because we're in a sound system in, we got all these other things, and if we are very careful with costs of sound systems and have something at a third, less than a third of the price we're expecting, we may have additional money to finish some things in the room, maybe even that. And I went out to our neighbor across the street, spoke to him about putting together a group meeting room. That's top, both wings like they are, a bit more of an angle, I think is what he designed, it's a 30-degree angle. Podium, closed fronts, wood top, the whole bit.
Yeah, most, most places that I've seen that have a permanent setup meeting, where you have the board, it's elevated, would be like here, and then off to the side you got, you know, like, so many tables and stuff like that.
I didn't get into trying to make this into something that is going to take massive amount of changes. I think the only change is going to be, take this out and brings everything over, finishes it up, putting it together here. Three pieces, one across the front right there that holds six, one, two, three, four, five, six, four on each side. One, two, three, four, we got a bid.
We have seven council members.
Exactly. So here's the idea, this time.
You would need eight.
You're going to make your money back in no time, because it's a great way from now. It's a great other meetings room. And it's sitting to be done, and your sound system can be installed in a manner that when it's in, you never touch it again. This, we even talked about pockets underneath, you could put lock cabinets underneath there that you can keep things you can watch meetings.
Are you saying to make something permanent?
Permanent. Well, it can be, we discussed that, if he took and bolted this together, could he unhook the sides and can it be, and even in the middle, and make it more easily moved to some big massive structure? He said, "No, rock, have the middle, two pieces there, two pieces here. If you ever do anything on the floor, it can come out."
Where are you going to store it? Where are you going to move it?
It stays here permanently.
So if you're going to rent the room, then the people, I mean, most people, most people that rent the room.
They're going to use it.
The most people that rent the room like the fact that it's one big open room, and they can configure things how they need to configure it for whatever function, whether it's the fire department having their banquet, whether it's somebody having a birthday party, whether it's the record doing.
Committee or fire department to sit around here, a birthday party for the birthday kid sitting in the middle of the table, everybody else in the chairs out here.
Well, so...
And it's 90, it should be $9,000.
The reason that scares me that it's permanent and no lock, because I'm the general public as well.
Well, I think Chuck is saying it's permanent but not permanent. It could be disassembled and moved.
But where do we move, that's what I mean, if we're going to move it, where are we storing it?
Well, you would probably push it up against the wall.
But that still means it's in, in the room with people that usually don't care. Well, then, so you started this because of the sound system. If you're going to have something that's permanent that can be movable, you're still not going to be able to have a permanent sound system probably hooked up to that, because that would be a wired system. And when you're talking about starting to move things around.
It's not a completely wired system. It can be wireless microphones, two or more handheld speakers for anyone in the public needs an amplifier. They sit down with one in front of them, give it the volume they need. And there's three speakers right across the front here.
So is that comparable to what we asked for?
It's, no, it's very different, but there probably needs to be some additional handicap accessibility issues too with...
Yeah, the speakers aren't enough, so I'm being a gaiety for the hearing. Chuck, you said that they couldn't throw in the bid, but if it's comparable.
They can.
They can.
Correct.
Well, see, I think, well, I asked them to do it, to look at it, that if it, if you, if you were going down the path of ADA approves your system, is that what you're looking for?
We want to be ADA compliant, we're not, yeah.
If it's submitted to ADA and say, "Look, this is what we want to put in, meets all your criteria, any problem with it," would you look at that more seriously at that point? So if they put this together describing everything and it's sent to ADA, surely they're going to do a little bid.
Chelsea.
Are you saying, is that what you're looking for? Is the ADA approved?
Chelsea, did our insurance company give us recommendations on what?
They didn't say specifically you have to do X, Y, or Z for it to satisfy ADA compliance, but they did indicate that we have to do, we have to absolutely be ADA compliant. So there was recommendations, but they didn't say you have to do it this way. Because ADA is not going to require their municipality to expend exorbitant amounts of money to satisfy the idea.
I understand, but I'm saying, the speaker system, did they say it should be at least this decibel?
No, they did not give me those exact specifics. I asked for them and I couldn't get them, so I went back and I did research on what was.
Gotcha.
What I'd like to see then, since this was put under properties, like I said at the last meeting, the only thing I had prior to last meeting and since it's thrown in anymore, is what we got at the council meetings, which is very good. So if I'm going to try to put this together to save you $25,000 that we can possibly build something in here that will last time, get rid of the sound over here problem, and put a speaker system in to satisfy some public and ADA, and we try to squeeze all that in the same kind of budget, let's get four pieces done, the same amount of money, we ought to at least take a very serious look at it.
So Chuck, are you indicating, so the company that you went to, they, did they indicate that a permanent sound system with wires would be a lot cheaper than doing the wireless?
The wireless, yes.
Alright.
Well, the people we talked to, Chelsea, told us the same thing.
But what I suggest then, what council can do, the ads out there, we can open the bid, June 24th, I believe it is. Yeah, June 24th, and then council doesn't have to accept them at all. You will know who the lowest responsible bidders are at that point, better? And then you can go forward, and if you guys, if you find something that is better, you can bring it to council too. It would be at that July meeting to either adopt the lowest responsible bidder or to, hey, listen, this is what the lowest responsible bidder was, but I found this entity that can do all of these things this way. I would like our carrier to review that before, to make sure that we hit all their requirements.
Even mine, I know sometime it can rub people here the wrong way, but I am strict to the point to only do things once. Give you everything I can as early as I can, give you time to read it and understand it. It's better for you to have things early, so that if you have a question, it is better to pick up the phone than it is to sit in here and somebody sitting here say, "I have no idea what this is." I don't want to do that. So if I can get, if I can tell them about our discussion, and then if they will write it up and just say, "This is predominantly what it is, and this is about what it's going to cost, and you can alter it to whatever you want," then we'll at least know where that ballpark is and if that equipment is going to satisfy our needs. And if it is, great. The money we save, we got a lot of other things we could possibly put it into. I mean, I know that some of the guys like to wear shorts in the summer, it would be nice if you clothed it.
Just certain people.
Yeah, just certain people. I don't want to say anything.
Point, no point in this, Chuck.
Oh, sorry, so that they're nervous and quick. At that height.
Chuck, just so you know, the bidding thresholds, under $12,600, no formal bidding, $12,600 to $23,200, you can get the free calls, and then after that you have to go up for bid. And that's why we did bid, because we knew it was more than the $23,000.
Yeah, yeah. I, I keep running, every time they change, I just run. So my head's been saying $12,000.
Okay.
You know, I don't, any, anything, you know, I don't expect him to even be preaching that.
Okay.
But, but again, I don't want to confuse the fact you just told the public, we're taking bids on something and then come along and don't say, I have something, that's what I'm bringing up here. You tell me where to go from here and make sure we're going right.
Well, yeah, you're doing your right, I mean, we're moving forward, we have to do something on this no matter what. And come July, you're going to have all the information and council can decide which way they want to go. They don't have to accept any of the bids. Okay?
Uh, my last issue is, um, the code enforcement committee. We established quite some time ago and, uh, we did all the things we needed to do and then we kind of lost contact with the members to get it ready.
You just put it out to bid again?
No, 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 no.
I think he's talking about the international property.
The maintenance.
I'm sorry.
I think Terry was spearheading that, wasn't he? He's not here.
Terry and Dawn.
Yeah, neither one of them are here.
And, um, I don't know if it's just can or won't, I've asked a few times, second meeting, I'll be there, didn't work. I wanted to start the meeting, see if they'd be there for that, still didn't work. And to me, it's an open book, we'll sit here. And as you can tell from now that we have an issue with not getting monthly reports, at least I do. Um, and I had a question sent to me about that the code enforcement is not the police contract, but it is. And bottom line is, it will take us one minute, one meeting, one to finish it, is that easy?
I will send out an email to both of them, anyway. Um, pretty much asking, you know, what are we doing with this? And how quickly are we going to do something with this?
Yeah, I'm telling you, we, we are far enough along, even Joe was in those meetings and him and I put together all of our questioning, we'll docs for everyone, we didn't get anything else back.
Okay.
And we're still sitting on it, waiting and waiting. And this other issue is getting more fragmented. And as that continues, the next thing we know, we're going to be back to where we were before you, uh, when we put in a police, uh, contract where it just wasn't being done and there was a difference. And let me tell you, your chief, I noticed that if he's the one doing most of that, um, I see a major difference. I drive the con and I see it, I see the difference.
So here's the last thing I'll say to you. If, if you're having a problem with the committee getting together, then just send me an email, send me a text and let me know.
Okay, you want the last ones or just starting right from now?
Well, starting right from now, okay, because then that way I can be evolved. If I'm, if I don't know that it's becoming a problem, then I can't help it. So.
Well, I, I don't like to do that, but.
Well, that's okay, but we.
If a member loses interest, it's perfectly fine. But.
Then we need to know that though.
Right, we can't just say, okay, we're obviously.
We're. So let me know, I mean, I'll send out, you know.
And with that, that's all I have, and Joe, I'll be down in the morning. Uh, if you're running it all apart, you just want to unlock that.
Yeah, what time, you guys good in town?
Right after nine. And if I deny, I'm unlocked, great.
Yeah.
Let's lock it up.
Yeah, just lock it up when you're done.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Uh, I've, uh, really forward the, uh, people want to, uh, become a record? Can you put that on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. Just so all of you are aware, that if you want something on an agenda, it just takes somebody to write me an email. So don't ever hesitate to do that, if you want something on the agenda, let me know. Hey.
Ted, the committee has the application for.
I've asked you.
I thought I emailed out to the committee.
Uh, you know where, but.
To, to who?
Well, whatever the recre.
There's only one on, there's only one on that board?
Not Recreation Board.
Uh, Recreation Committee.
Committee.
Council, Councils Committee. I believe you're not part of it, Chuck.
No, I'm not.
I think it's Tony, Ted, and, okay, maybe not.
Yeah, I didn't get.
Okay.
No, you have to have another name in it.
Yeah, I think it's Terry. I'm pretty sure it's Terry. So I try to go through the committee, so if the committees tell me that they, they think that those names are good, then that's usually when I say, we'll put them on your agenda, so.
And Joe, can you also email me a copy of this?
If I mail, if I email to the committee, I can't add a fourth person.
Well.
Same stuff with that, then.
It's Ted, committee venom in Parks and Recreation, Ted, Dawn, and.
Oh, it's Dawn, I'm sorry. Okay.
How is Dawn?
As far as, yeah, she, she was okay last week, I didn't hear from her.
Okay, any other comments from the officials? Ted, anything? Mary? Just?
No.
No old business? Move on to new business, discussion on updating sewer rules and regulations?
Um, we had some real, real preliminary discussions a while back about possibly updating our sewer rules and regulations to allow in some circumstances for a pipe bursting and possibly pipe lining. Sometimes people get into a situation where they have a finished basement and they got to take something on the ground right now, or they're not allowed for lining for first. So, um, Tony asked me to put this on for discussion later. We would have to probably have the engineer look at some options, evaluate them. Uh, if you want to allow for the bursting, um, to, you know, come up with some specs on, you know, what we were going to allow, because there's a lot of lease for linings, there's a variety of methods out there for lining. Some are UV, some are, um, you know, I'm trying to say.
Yeah, brightening thing you could do.
Yeah, you know, so.
Does everybody know what that means? The bursting and lining?
So bursting is, there's a pipe there, they bring a second pipe through. It's usually pulled through, but sometimes it push. And it breaks the old pipe and the new pipe slides in. So, okay, so you're not disturbing, you're not digging.
Right.
You do have to dig a beginning and end.
You have to have a beginning and end. Hey, not to back up real quick, but I did send the committee an email on May sixteenth with the applications.
Okay, and then lining is, is, it's a, a liner that gets glued to the pipe, the existing pipe. So if there's a break in the pipe or if there's a, a collapse, you can't use it. But if the pipe is in decent condition, you can use a liner, which once again, you still have to have a, a beginning and end.
So for example, if you want to sell your house, the buyer has to go through a sewage inspection. Let's just say there is two roots in this couple of foot section. Right now, you have to dig that up or replace the pipe where.
This process.
This process, it's going to be a lot cheaper with the technology. Me personally, we talked about this years ago. I mean, that it's, uh, the technology that.
And it's, it's, it's probably time to look at it, because we did the original, um, sewer specs ten years ago, roughly, a little bit more, and then we updated it in twenty twenty, just to try to clarify some things. But when we originally did them way back when, the, the, the pipe bursting really wasn't a thing for laterals. Nobody was really doing it, the lining was, uh, not as advanced as it is today with the materials and the curing methods and stuff, so we, we didn't, back then, they didn't put it in the specs. Most of the technology didn't recommend it back then.
Your thoughts now?
No, when we did our sewer separation project, we pipe bursted, uh, pipe right underneath somebody's house and as it was being pulled through, you could feel the vibration on the floor. And it, it bursted the pipe and we were concerned that it might harm the floor.
It was along the tracks.
It was along the tracks, right, it was, uh, and, and anyway, it worked out pretty good, since by knowledge, you've never heard of any problems with.
No, no, and like I said, back then, like, you have a, a few of your local plumbers that are, have our small bursting equipment now, they can burst a four inch or a six inch file. Back then, the only bursting that's being done is for large mainline projects, like we did up there. We did a bursting, a section we burst up on observatory and replaced that too. Sometimes it's beautiful, sometimes it's disgusting, but it's definitely worth, it's looking to, another option for our residents.
So this time, this important thing for that's going to be, um, laterals that have, um, bell, yeah, terracotta bells. Because they may be four foot sections of bell on, on each end, you know, there.
Back up here is.
And we drink that apart easily.
Correct.
And hold plastic through that, so that may be the simplest, you're going to find that at home up here.
Well, and that's the thing, when we were talking about this, you know, it's just getting to the point where they're getting better. Plus, it may save our residents money.
But it's not, it's not just the old part of Time Shop with the, with the VCP pipe. I've seen houses that have been here for a hundred years and they do a sore lateral inspection and that, that, uh, terracotta clay pipe is pristine, there's not a thing wrong with it. And we've done ones in newer plants, where they're less than ten years old, they have bellies in, in the plastic and everything else. So, you know, it's.
But this is, just gives the residents some other option, there are two more options, actually.
I think it's a good idea.
So maybe we have.
So are you planning on two weeks bringing this in for further discussion?
I, I would say so.
How far are you going to take it, that meeting, talking about motions?
Well, definitely we can make motions.
I think your initial thing is going to have the engineer look at options, correct?
Yeah, I think we need the people to go pass on that, though, we need to get some time to really understand.
I know there's one, uh, one local plumber that does lining that had offered in the past. We wanted to see if he would do a, a small demonstration for us on the lining method that he uses. I believe that one, they, they cure it with a UV light.
Does everybody see it on, like, Facebook, TikTok?
I do, I do it, I do the same thing. Jim, if it's the same thing, when we do an internal repair like we did on Clay Avenue, we, we, we have big test ball, we prep it. And once you start prepping, you have the time, be able to prep it, put the glue on and wrap it around like a test ball thing. And I don't have so much time to start to cure, then I go down, because that's what I do. And I shove it up the line, and we got it marked before with a camera for footage. So we can hit a pair, a pair in the manual eighty feet and I'll know where to push that thing. Then I mark the air line with a piece of black electrical tape and I push that in and we give it the air. Now, this is for three pops and it has a setup time of like for two and a half hours.
What do you cure it with?
Like some kind of resin, and then when we're done.
So, yeah, you're, this was.
This is smart, it's called smart repair.
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about, it actually goes in after the lining and cures it with a UV light.
Oh, okay.
Sort of like they put the material and then there's like a balloon and the balloon goes through the pipe and it smashes this material up against it, so it creates a line. And it goes the whole way through.
I mean, it's not going to work.
And then they inflate that, pull it back, and then that liner, they cure it, and then it has.
It may take three holes to get a little pipe done like that compared to tearing up the whole line. And what happens if that's a deep pipe?
I mean, they can, they can burst, they can burst a, a, I mean, I know on some mainline bursting projects, they've gone several hundred feet.
It's a long way.
Yeah, and I know it saved us up on observatory with all the big trees up there.
The, the terracotta's up there, it's re-lined now?
No, no, we, it, it, we burst one big section on top of the hill when we did the, made sewer line replacement up there. Was that a hundred feet in, about two hundred feet?
So we've had, so we've had it in town, the experience with it.
Just not with.
And you're happy to say that, let's open the door to this just to give.
The homeowner, correct.
To give the homeowner in the borough, is that the idea?
No, we've, we've always had that option for mainlines.
And you won't, so that's where you see in most burrows, the burrows are starting to use these methods. But they've also usually told the residents, no, well, now it's good for the borough, wasn't it not good for the resident?
Plus, most of the issues are when people sell their houses and then they do the inspection and there's a small crack or whatever, right? It's just, it's going to save costs for everybody.
Correct. So, this will be on regular meetings agenda. Anybody else? On this? Joe, is there any correspondence? No, sir. I need approval to pay the bills.
Don't make that move.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, is there a need for executive session? No. Assistant comments? Ann Lewis?
Here, my recognized president, Gockel. I just have, uh, one question with the ADA, um, sound system will be on the agenda for next month. Or I mean for the next meeting on June fifteenth.
Probably not till July.
Nineteen.
No, I mean.
No, I'm asking President Gockel, please.
The bids are not going to be ready, so it probably won't be on till July.
So we're not going to have public comment before that time?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean.
Well, we've been talking about it for a while, there's some misinformation that's being given out that I feel that it should be on the agenda for public comments because Joe at the last meeting was absolutely correct. And so was Councilman Jerry, that the public has a right to make comments on this PA system, sir.
Correct, and, and at any point when we have public comment that's not on the agenda, you can absolutely make that comment.
So what you're saying is you won't put it on the agenda for the next council meeting?
No, I, I don't have a plan.
I think it can be discussed at the end of the meeting under public.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I didn't hear, I heard two voices. Okay, Jim, do you want to second that one?
Sure.
All those in favor? All those opposed?